Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The congressional map we have here before us, we've already passed two maps for our state legislature that are not necessarily representative of the Georgia of today. Now, we have another map that is designed to entrench GOP power in the state. How do we know that this is not necessarily something to be proud of? The majority party released their proposal just a few hours before the committee meeting to talk about it. They did not give Georgians any time to review the map and offer feedback and comments, apparently in an effort to tamper down the scrutiny of a map they know that is unfair. The map draws nine of 14 districts to favor the GOP, that's 64 percent. And we know in the last election, the GOP didn't meet that standard. It is apparently clear that you can't draw a GOP majority in this state without gerrymandering to silence the voice of minorities. Georgia is likely already a majority-minority state, but only five of 14 proposed congressional districts are majority-minority. But you don't have to take my word for it. All you have to do is go to the website that the state provided for public comeback and feedback, or listen to the testimony from the two committee hearings we've had on the map. The people of Georgia have their eyes on us and may not like, and apparently do not like, based on some of the comments we've heard so far, what they have seen and heard. Because not a single person testified in favor of those districts. You're giving Georgians all the more reasons to go to the polls next year to elect a statewide majority, a new statewide majority. This isn't the only referendum this map will receive. It must cut the mustard of the voters at the polls in every election coming up. It may pass, and likely to pass, in the chamber at this time, but it probably will fail the public test. The voters of Georgia will keep turning out, and the voices will be heard despite efforts to ignore them. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 48th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I rise to speak in opposition to SB 2 EX, which seeks to redraw Georgia's congressional maps for the next decade. And I'm speaking to you today not just as your colleague, but as a resident of what is, for now, Georgia's 6th congressional district. Now, I don't doubt that the process of redistricting is complex, but the map for the Georgia 6th should have been the easiest part of your job. So first, population adjustment, which is supposed to be the sine qua non of redistricting. Based on the results of the 2020 census, of Georgia's 14th congressional districts, the Georgia 6th was the closest already to ideal population size, right? We have this right here, double-checked it. It only required a change of about 660 voters. 660, that's fewer people than attend my kids' elementary school, okay? This district was almost exactly the right size, exactly the way it was. However, the Republican congressional map shifts nearly 50 percent of the metro Atlanta population out of the 6th district and brings in a fresh batch of more than 350,000 voters from Republican strongholds as far flung as Cherokee, Forsyth, and Dawson Counties. It's really difficult to innocently justify this wholesale transfusion of voters from the Georgia 6th, but that didn't stop our Republican colleagues from doing just that. Next, the issue of competitive districts. The Georgia 6th was already the most competitive district in the state. Newly flipped in 2018, its evolution is really the exemplar of the rapidly changing suburbs of metro Atlanta. Changes the redistricting process should ideally reflect. Instead of preserving this healthy new growth, the new Republican map destroys not just one, but two competitive districts. Not only does it completely recast the Georgia 6th to be distinctly Republican, it takes another competitive seat, the Georgia 7th, and packs it so full of Democratic voters that the power of each person's vote is minimized. This is not what our voters asked for, but that didn't stop our Republican colleagues from doing it anyway. Finally, public input. Much has been made by the Republicans of the public hearings, the concert series held around the state this summer, prior to the census data being released. Much less has been made of the public comments logged after these congressional maps were actually released publicly, only one day before the committee voted it through. I think if our Republican colleagues are going to go through the charade of pretending that we're listening to our voters, some of these comments from voters about the Georgia 6th in specific should be shared right here on the Senate floor. All these comments are direct quotes from the public portal for redistricting, the link to which, incidentally, is actually pretty difficult to locate. L. Mullis, no relation, of Fulton County writes, "It is clear that this redistricting is intended to silence the voices of minority and more progressive communities who have spoken out loud and clear in the past few elections. I live in Sandy Springs, and my concerns are significantly different from those of someone who resides in Dawson County." A. and Tegi and Jettie of Fulton County writes, "I am absolutely appalled by the degree of partisan gerrymandering Georgia Republicans are engaging in to redraw the congressional maps. The proposed 6th congressional district combines urban Fulton County with rural Dawson County. It makes a Democratic district a 15-point gain for Republicans. This new district is clearly a direct attack on Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth, and especially disenfranchises the minority voters who currently reside there." V. Manson of DeKalb County writes, "The Republicans state that they want to maintain the central core of the districts and be responsive to the constituents. In Chairwoman Rich's presentation of their map, she frequently cites what they have heard from voters during the town halls. She offers no evidence of support from the District 6 voters to justify this massive change." And maybe most heartbreakingly of all, J. P. of Fulton County writes, "Do legislators even read these comments? Given the resulting maps, I do not blame voters for wondering. This recasting of the Georgia 6th, represented by the first-ever Congresswoman of color to ever hold that seat, is an insult to the principles Democratic elections ideally seek to defend. Further, it's an insult to our voters, and they will remember." It's often said that people fear change, but I don't actually think that's usually the case. I actually think what people fear is not so much change, but loss. And fear of loss is exactly what these maps demonstrate. Because redistricting in this way, drawing districts so contrived as to be ludicrous, to shore up power that is clearly fading, looks like a balding man trying to fool the world with an embarrassing comb over. Because no matter how hard you try, it's evident to everyone how desperately you're trying to hide what you've lost already. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 33rd to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, my fellow senators, colleagues, friends, and y'all. As you know, I don't come to the well that often. Matter of fact, that's why I ran up here today. But today I came up here because I have a concern, because I've been getting a lot of communication from constituents in Cobb County. I'm not here to praise Caesar, nor am I here to bury Caesar, but today I have a concern. I'm not here to explain to you if God made little green apples, or if it snows in the summertime in Indianapolis, but I have a concern. And my concern is, they moved the congressional person who represents the 13th district and moved him out of Cobb County and replaced him with the congressional person from the 14th. Now, the area in which the congressional person from the 14th came into is one of the most heavily populated African-American areas in Cobb County. As a matter of fact, the first black mayor ever elected in Cobb County is in the 14th district now, who represents Powder Springs. Also, the first black mayor ever in the city of Austell is now represented by the person from the 14th district. I've gotten a lot of communication from people in the district who are not happy with that because they feel now that their vote will not be heard. And I did try to encourage change so that we could bring the congressional person from the 13th back to southwest Cobb County, because he's represented for a long time. I appreciate you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my concern, and thank you very much. I yield the well, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 44th to present the measure, or speak to the measure.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Senators, I rise in opposition to SB 2 EX. The maps that we are voting on today silence the voices of Georgia voters, minimizes the political power of people of color, and ignores that Georgia is equally divided politically. This process and these maps affect Georgians significantly at the voting booth and in their everyday lives. That is why voters should pick their representatives, not the other way around. The majority party has ignored the will of Georgia voters. Georgians ask for transparency and a process that allows time for meaningful public response, but these were denied. The Republican map was not released to the public until three hours before the committee hearing began. The map was passed out of committee just 25 hours after it was first released to the public. There was not a meaningful opportunity for Georgians to interpret the maps that they will have to live with for 10 years. There was very limited opportunity to provide testimony and comment directly to the committee. The committee did not answer any questions from the public about this map. Because we don't have answers, we have just go by what we see, and we see more of the same. Efforts to preserve Republican power in the face of a changing electorate. We see a map that was unnecessarily targets one of Georgia's female congressional representatives who was elected and entrusted by her community. We see a map that fails to fairly represent Georgia 1 million new non-white residents or our population increases in urban areas. We see a map that represents the majority party's fear. It is the fear of accountability, fear of having to win on your policies, fear of facing the voters of Georgia without a system that is rigged in your favor. Now, what bothers me about this redistricting process is that my Republican colleagues continue to target and discriminate against women of color. I think there's a conspiracy against women of color in the Georgia General Assembly. The two women arrested in jail, one from the House and one from the Senate, who were just exercising their constitutional rights, were arrested and treated unfairly. I believe from the top leadership of this state and from this body, when you use racist tactics like this, that is so outrageous to the public, then you come back and use the law and maps to target and discriminate against women of color, trying to make sure that there are less women of color elected to this body and in Congress. Just look at these maps in the Senate and the congressional one, targeting women of color. That's crazy. It's crazy. But my Democratic colleagues and I aren't afraid. We will keep fighting on behalf of the people of this state, and because we know that we have that support behind us, we will keep finding ways to win. Just know that we will not be silenced when you target women of color. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 35th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of the 56 senators serving in this body, only 17 are women. Yet, according to the Center for American Women and Politics at Rutgers University, in 2021, women currently comprise 31 percent of state legislators nationally. Women of color, however, make up only 26.5 percent of women that are currently serving in state legislatures. At a time when the number of women elected to local office is just starting to climb out of the basement, we should not be drawing maps that make it harder for a female incumbent or harder for women to run and win in new districts. We should not be making changes that have a greater impact on districts held by women. But that is exactly what we're doing with these maps. In their drawing of congressional districts, Republicans have drawn out Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth from the 6th district, and in the redrawing of the 7th district, Congresswoman Carolyn Bordeaux is essentially drawn out of her district that she now represents. Their maps targets 50 percent of the congressional women that are now serving Georgia. With this congressional map, the majority party is targeting a black woman, one of only two in our delegation, in order to redraw her district to make it safely Republican. That's unacceptable. In the previously passed legislative maps, Republicans targeted a female senator who happens to also be the only female Asian-American senator in Georgia. And it can be argued that the voices of thousands of Asian-American voters in Senate District 48 are being silenced. There were also major changes in the Senate District 6, currently held by a woman. Specifically, we've seen that this congressional map, and with the Senate maps we passed last week, women, and specifically women of color, have been targeted. It's not new, but it's true. This congressional map, in conjunction with the Senate map, fails to protect the seats of a number of female incumbents, many of whom are recently elected yet trusted and supported in their districts. Simply put, we cannot say to the people of Georgia, "We see you. We're drawing fair maps. We want you to be represented," while at the same time drawing lines that erase the extremely hard-fought gains of minority women in this state. We are watching a process in which men are using their accumulated power to diminish the political impact of female legislators and voters. Maybe this should not be surprising when we examine which party actually elects women to this body. 15 of the 17 women in this chamber, or I'll say 80 percent, are Democrats. 68 percent of the Democrats in this chamber are women. Unfortunately, only 6 percent of the Republicans in this chamber are women, while 94 percent are men. And that does not mean... And what does this mean for the women of Georgia? It means that the issues impacting women, for example, childcare, maternity, maternal mortality, reproductive health, will continue to be underfunded and overlooked. You know, women bias has been happening for a long time. I was the second African-American in history to be elected to this body back in the 90s during my first tenure. And the first had just been elected for three months, Nadine Thomas, when I won an unexpired term. And it hasn't changed that much since then, unfortunately. So let's erase that target on our backs. Let's erase that bull's eye. This is not gone unnoticed by the women of this chamber or the women voters of Georgia who make up the biggest portion of voters in the state. So please, take the target off our backs. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 39th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. Georgia has changed. Our state has grown by a million people in the last decade, and in that time, we've trended more and more blue, culminating in the election of President Joe Biden in 2020 and Senators Raphael Warnock and John Ossoff in 2021. The people of Georgia looked at the leadership in this state and in this country and decided it was time for a change. Georgia's 6th congressional district went from being the center of the Republican revolution to a reliably blue district, thanks in large part to changing attitudes and priorities among suburban voters. Democrats elected Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth in 2018 in a close election, but in 2020, she had a commanding 10-point win, cementing the shift in the district. You wouldn't know it looking at this map, though. Now, rather than consider how they might win those voters back, the GOP has decided to pack them away into an already safe blue district where their vote doesn't matter as much. The 6th will go from being a competitive blue district to a safe red district. This isn't what the people of Georgia demanded when they went to the ballot box in 2017, 2020, or 2021. We're as close to a 50-50 state now as any state in the nation, and our map should reflect that. We should respect the desire of the people of Georgia to vote for their elected officials in free, fair, and competitive elections, rather than pack reliable conservative voters in while dividing liberal-leaning neighborhoods and communities. I can literally think of no reason that people in Fulton and Dawson County should be voting for the same rep. Our work here will be done before the holiday, but never mind that we are getting districts that are carved up like a Thanksgiving turkey. I know that nothing I say up here today will change the minds of those who already knew they were going to vote on this map from the second it was put forward. This map will pass as is, regardless of how blatantly gerrymandered it is. But make no mistake, this has not been a fair process, this has not been a transparent process, and this has certainly not been a collaborative process. Just because you allow people to come forward and speak does not mean that you chose to listen. If you did, then this map would reflect just how much Georgia has changed. I'm disappointed that we will leave this chamber today, having ignored the people of Georgia. Thank you, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 6th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand today in opposition to SB 2 EX, a congressional map that's been rushed through the process without meaningful public comment or really any efforts at bipartisan consensus. This map proposed today dilutes the voices of people of color, is the final nail in the coffin, as Republicans work to rig our elections for the next decade. I don't need to spell out the statistics here, they're plain as day. Georgia voted for President Joe Biden with 49.47 percent of the vote, elected Senator Raphael Warnock with 51 percent, and Senator John Ossoff with 50.6 percent, and they're all Democrats. Yet this congressional map will leave us with nine Republican seats and five Democratic seats. So that's 65 percent Republican representation in Congress in a 50-50 state. Does that sound right to you? We're here to discuss the congressional maps, but there's something greater at play here that we need to unpack. Yet Georgia is changing, yes, it's becoming more diverse, but Georgia's always been diverse. It's really our greatest strength. I think what the difference is, is that Georgians, now of all backgrounds, identities, are taking power for themselves, and more and more of our elected officials are starting to actually look like and reflect the population of this state. Now, it didn't happen overnight, it happened as a result of decades of organizing and fighting. And look, that scares Republicans, not because it hurts their constituents or because it results in bad policy, it just leaves them with less power. So what do you do when you're losing or you're behind? Well, you just change the rules of the game. AJC published an article last week about how the redistricting process specifically disadvantages women who are more likely to be forced out of their seats. You know, Republicans did this in 2011, pairing women incumbents against more senior male colleagues, forcing them out of the legislature. And they're doing it again this time to Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth, breaking up her diverse Cobb County base into four different congressional districts. Now, you're taking Lucy Macbeth out, and you're putting Marjorie Taylor Greene in. Now, I represent Cobb County, and I can tell you that that's not okay. Now, I represent Cobb County, and I can tell you that that's not okay. You're trying to eliminate her seat, just as you did with the Senator from the 48th. And it's no coincidence that y'all are going after women of color, who are rising stars in this party and in this state, and who consistently, consistently hold Republicans' feet to the fire. Now, there is something profoundly destructive about a political system in which having more talented, more diverse, successful people competing is somehow a bad idea. Now, y'all may remember a speech I gave in 2019, when you ran through another bill that was an attempt to deny women their fundamental rights. And in that speech, I said that women would reclaim their rights after they reclaimed your seats. And listen, they did. The Senator from the 48th did, the Senator from the 9th, the 39th, they're all new to this chamber. We've been adding women, women of color, women of different backgrounds. We've been growing the strength of women in the Senate and in the House. And now y'all are trying to take it back. So Republican attacks on women have never been subtle. They've never been subtle. And now we have women of color who represent the future of this state, who have actually won higher office in competitive races. They've won races in districts that y'all drew to be Republican. I mean, I took Hunter Hill's place. You know, there was some celebrating earlier this week because Georgia Public Broadcasting published an article about how Georgia leads the nation in black women's representation in the legislature. And that is indeed, indeed, something to be proud of. Black women make up 16.9% of our General Assembly, but it's still not enough, and that's a record. We should celebrate that, but we gotta do more. You know, y'all have drawn the map so that it's all but impossible for our caucus, which looks like Georgia, by the way, to get anywhere near a majority in the next 10 years. In so doing, you diluted the power of people of color, of women, of young people, targeting Congresswoman Lucy McBath, the Senator from the 48th, really our entire caucus. You know, this is about putting women in their place. You know what? To that, I say that the place where women belong is in the House, in the Senate, in Congress, and yes, even in the governor's mansion. Some people will look at this gerrymander and say, "Our system is broken. There's nothing we can do." But I think what we all know is that the system isn't broken, it's working exactly the way Republicans have designed it. And that is something we should all be concerned about. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the minority leader to speak to the measure and to also speak to
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Senate. I rise today with a straight face, as the Senator from the 46th so pointedly referred to me in committee yesterday. With a straight face, I rise to vote against the Senate be of 2 EX and to report to you the minority report and to make my own comments. Today, we finished the unfortunate process of gerrymandering the state of Georgia. District lines are required to be drawn to reflect the current population of the state. Unfortunately, the majorities map does not reflect the Georgia of today, as evidenced by the results of the 2020 census. What did the 2020 census tell us? Among other things, it told us that Georgia continues to be a fast-growing state. Everyone in this chamber, regardless of party, is rightly proud that the state retunes it gets ranked among the best to do business. I don't know what's wrong with that word, it won't come out of my mouth routinely. Thank you. Our growing economy has led to a growing population. Georgia has about 1 million more people than it did 10 years ago, the last time we drew maps. When we consider how to redraw the maps, we need to consider who those Georgians are. The census always gave us that information. Those Georgians are overwhelmingly black, Asian, Hispanic, and other people of color that mostly live in metro Atlanta. Georgia's non-Hispanic white population decreased from 2010 to 2020, making up 50.1% of Georgia's population as of the census. As of today, Georgia is likely already, and you've heard it said many times in this last three weeks, a majority-minority state. The growth in minority communities in Georgia that has helped drive our economic growth is something that should be celebrated. Not only is Georgia the best state in which to do business, it is an environment in which minority-owned businesses thrive. These new minority residents deserve an equal opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. Unfortunately, the congressional map before us today, just like the Senate and the House maps that have already passed this chamber, failed to provide Georgians of color the representation they deserve. The congressional proposal before us does not provide fair representation to Georgia's richly diverse population. The map both cracks and packs voters of color and likely only contains five districts in which voters of color can elect the candidates of their choice. Think about that. In a state that is likely majority-minority, only five of 14 districts will likely provide voters of color an opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. In addition to being unfair to voters of color, and like the Senate map this chamber passed, the congressional proposal also targets women and women of color. In the Senate map, this chamber passed the only incumbent that was targeted by the majority as an Asian-American woman. And the congressional proposal before us clearly targets the black female incumbent. Additionally, the proposed 7th district is drawn to exclude the home of the district's current female incumbent. Perhaps Georgia should not be surprised that the process by which these maps have been drawn and enacted discriminate against voters of color and target women. The congressional proposal that is before us, before this body today, was passed in committee yesterday with the support of nine white men. Not a single member of color nor any woman voted for this proposal in committee. Indeed, the five votes against this proposal were cast by two black women and three black men. And what will the vote in support of this proposal in this chamber look like today? I have 34 colleagues on the other side of the aisle, 32 of them are men, 31 of those 32 are non-Hispanic white men. These are the individuals today who will dictate the political future of a majority-minority state. Perhaps I should not be surprised that such a group seeks to dictate an unfair future to voters of color and women. Where else does this map fall short? Unlike the Senate and House maps that have already passed this chamber, the congressional proposal before us fails to reflect the dramatic population shift over the last decade from rural to urban areas and failed to recognize that Georgia's growth was driven by metro Atlanta. Unlike the House and Senate maps that we passed, both of which moved districts from rural areas to growing metro areas, this congressional proposal fails to locate a new district in metro Atlanta. Due to the congressman from Georgia's 10th district running for statewide office, we have a vacant rural district to work with without needing to pair anyone running for reelection or otherwise targeting an incumbent. Democrats presented a proposal in which the proposed 10th district is a suburban, majority-minority district just west of Atlanta. It reduces the number of congressional districts in Cobb County from the existing three to two. Unfortunately, the congressional proposal before us moves in the opposite direction, splitting Cobb County into four different districts. Does that make sense? Our proposed 10th district also incorporates communities of Ventress and Douglas and Fulton Counties that share similar characteristics to Cobb County. It's also worth noting that Cobb County, which the proposal before us split four ways, is a majority-minority county in which voters of color have recently gained more political power. Also, in a move to gain partisan advantage without regard to communities of interest, the majority has proposed a new 6th district that doesn't make sense. Sandy Springs and Dawson County in the proposed 6th share less in common than Sandy Springs, Northeast Cobb and North Cab in the existing district. However, those communities of interest are dismantled. Again, worth noting that in doing so, the proposal before us reduces the black, Asian, and Hispanic populations in the proposed 6th district. This decision is doubly disappointing because the current 6th district is the closest to ideal population of any district in the state, being less than 700 people too many. The existing district could have been maintained with minor changes to account for population, which is what our map proposes. Our proposed 6th district also remains a competitive district where both Republicans and Democrats can be elected. This map also unfairly fails to reflect the partisan preferences of Georgians, as we've seen in recent elections. Georgia is a state that is equally divided politically, yet the proposal before us seeks to ensure that almost two-thirds of Georgia's congressional delegation will be Republican. Yesterday, I heard the committee chairman try to equate the Republican proposal to the Democratic proposal, despite the fact that our proposal received a B and theirs received a C on partisan fairness. We all know that a B is better than a C. Our proposal more closely reflects where Georgia is today than the proposal before us. This whole process has been very disappointing from start to finish. The committee spent all summer, supposedly collecting public input, but the maps don't reflect the request of the public. People repeatedly, repeatedly asked for fair maps and a transparent process, and this body completely failed to deliver. The committee considered maps mere days or even hours after proposals were made public. It should be very concerning that not a single member of the public spoke in favor of any map the Senate had passed or the one before us today, yesterday during Senate committee hearings. And I just, I can't help myself right now. I have got to, I've just got to tell you some of the good stuff that's in our map. And you have it on your desk, you can read it for yourself, but I just got to say it out loud. The Democratic map is a fair map that Georgians asked for. It's a fair map that reflects Georgia's diverse population. It allows voters of color an equal opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. It reflects the political preferences of Georgia voters and reflects change in population trends within Georgia. Our map provides fair reputation to voters of color. Because Georgia is one of the most diverse states in the country and likely, and I repeat, already a majority-minority state. As of April 2020, Georgia's population was 50.1% white and non-Hispanic. This proposal contains six districts in which minorities are a majority of residents and a majority of the voting age population, Districts 2, 4, 5, 7, 10, and 13. Communities of color have grown in Atlanta metro area over the last decade. African Americans' population has increased by 22%, over 350,000 people. Hispanic population has increased by 31%, and that's over 147,000 people. The Asian population increased by 45%, over 100,000 people. This map keeps Atlanta metro communities of color together in urban, compact districts so that their policy interests are represented. As the Senator from the 46th said to me yesterday, "I sit, you sit there with a straight face," and yes, I do, "stand here today with a straight face and tell you that our map fairly represents the partisan makeup of Georgia's electorate." Georgia is equally divided politically, which we saw clearly in the last election cycle. This proposal gives voters an opportunity to elect a congressional delegation that more closely reflects Georgia's political preferences. Our map fairly reflects population growth and shifts within Georgia. Georgia has experienced significant, significant population growth, and it has become more and more diverse and has seen its population become more concentrated in the urban and suburban regions of metro Atlanta. suburban regions of metro Atlanta. Mr. President, the governor called only set the start of the special session. The Senate, we can stay here as long as we need to. I don't like the idea of coming back next week either. But passing fair maps that will guide the state for a decade is important. I ask you to vote down this map today and instead consider and pass Senate Bill 3 EX, the Democratic map, which is a fair map that my colleagues and I introduced. Yes, I stand here with a straight face today to let you know that, yes, I'm going to vote against 2 EX. And I ask you with a straight face to do the same thing. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 18th to close debate.
Well, now I have to say good afternoon, colleagues. Well, we're getting close. I'm not going to keep you too long, but I do want to respond to some of the things that really have been said by the defendants, by the Democrats, excuse me. It's a product of the work hazard of the job I do when I'm not here, right?
Another example of being citizen legislators.
Thank you for that moment. You know, one of the things that's really most puzzling about is the list of deficiencies about the process by which we've gone at this, even to the point of details being suggested like, oh, my gosh, the public portal is hard to find, that the search function wasn't done properly. Where were those comments back when they would have made a difference? Where's the email from the Democrats saying, hey, we need to have a better model? We need to make this easier for public access. Let's correct it in a certain way. Let's do it differently. No, no, don't do it that way, my goodness. Then that might reveal that the process we've got is fair. Let's wait till it's game over and we're going down and we're just going to complain about the way the Republicans did it, but we're not going to offer any corrective measure. Does that ring of any credibility to anybody? No, of course not. And all these other maps that are referred to by all these other institutions and different folks, how good must they have been if not one Democratic senator attached it to a bill and dropped it in our hopper? Not one. They had their collective work of their map that the minority leader very eloquently spoke about, but nobody in this chamber thought enough of all these other maps that y'all want to talk about now when we're at the very end of the process. You know, there was a poignant moment, if y'all were in the committee meeting or if you watched it, you saw it, but I think it's very telling. And it really hearkens back to something I said when I made my closing remarks about the Senate maps and the House maps. Consistency is the hallmark of credibility. And if you're not consistent, you're not really going to be credible. We saw a different version of that visited on us this time. And it came in an exchange in the committee hearing yesterday where it became very apparent regarding the Black Legislative Caucus that we learned in a previous hearing had gone around the state of Georgia, held public hearings in areas that our committee didn't go. We went to nine different ones and had two additional virtual meetings. But the Congressional, but the Black Legislative Caucus went around the state and will tell you now and said in the committee hearings obtained valuable data and very important information. And it was so important, it drove and was included in the maps that they generated. But nobody thought it was important enough or good enough or credible enough to take that information and send it to the redistricting committee so that we could all consider that or to send it to me, the chair, and say, hey, Mr. Chairman, these are important, these are things we find to be valuable and important, please consider them. You may not include them, but what does everybody in this chamber know? If they're not at least communicated, there's no opportunity to include them. So it begs the question, just as it did before, are we talking about real information that the Democrats think really ought to be included? Or are we just trying to play a game to create the optics of somehow our process is deficient? You figured it out, you know what it is. And then we heard some comments, quite frankly, I think it was the senator from the 42nd that I agree with, comments about, you know, this is the people's house, that none of these seats belong to us. I absolutely agree with that. These seats don't belong to us. We just have the honor of representing the folks back home that live in the district with a number that's on our desk. But you know, interestingly, the Democrats are asking for a process to protect incumbents. We heard the senator from the 6th say the Republicans are trying to eliminate her seat. And all of the other comments that were said suggestive that what we should have done were to have protected certain people. Of course, the ones they're talking about are Democrat incumbents, but it's to protect someone. Folks, that's not what this process is about. It's not about the person in the seat right now because whoever it is won't be there very long. It's about making sure of the fair, legal, proper process for the voters that live in that district to choose. You can't have it both ways. You can't say that this belongs, that the seats don't belong to us, and at the same time say, but wait a minute, you ought to be protecting the senator or the House member in Congress from the 6th or pick any other district. You can't have it both ways. And of course, we had to have it because the press is here today, and I'm glad they are, somebody had to say voter suppression, y'all just can't help yourselves, with absolutely no rational relationship or connection between the maps we've got and anything to do with voter suppression. But it's an opportunity to try to say it. It's a tired old line that's just as fake and just as false now as it was back when we heard it in March when we were debating SB 202. Then we heard about, well, this is, this process has just not been transparent. Well, I can tell you, I don't know if y'all do and the ones that are complaining, but I can tell you, there's over a thousand comments logged on the portal. Those were all printed off and reviewed by us. There are over 50 comments that were logged in after the September map that was published by the Republicans. We went through all of them. The comments about Jim Crow are just really, really disappointing. You know, if you want to live in the past, let's go back to 2001 and look at how y'all managed the process. But no, wait a minute, y'all don't want to do that. I've been told very pointedly, off the record, on the record, from the well, whoa, I'm tired of hearing about 2001. I know y'all are. Those maps are embarrassing to you. There's nothing new that's been added to the narrative today. All of these questions were answered in the committee hearings. I'm going to wrap up by, you know, we heard, and we heard some senators today that want to tout and are really proud of the Princeton Jeramandering Project, which kind of is a funny name. Those fine folks in New Jersey didn't want to tell us how we ought to do what we're doing and want to give grades and want to give us bad grades. But you know, it's really hard to tell how they come about those grades and how did they figure those grades. So I did a little sort of informal grading around ourselves. While the Princeton folks don't give us an A, you know, the Rural Georgia Project, I don't know if y'all have heard of them, they give us an A+ for the 11 hearings that we held. You know, Senator from the 53rd, the Chickamauga Contingency gives us an A+ for contiguous districts. How about Senator from the 19th? I don't know if you know, but the Vidalia Onion Belt gives us an A+ for not having multi-member districts. Senator from the 29th, the Warm Springs Warriors give us an A+ for compactness. Senator from the 11th, the Good Folks and the Quail Country Citizens, they give us an A+ for protecting communities of interest. Senator from the 50th, the Heroes of Habersham, they give us an A+ for complying with the U.S. Constitution. And the final grade, my little hometown of Adrian, Georgia, where I grew up, of 800 people, Senator from the 23rd, they give us an A+. The Adrian Patriots give us an A+ for complying with the Georgia Constitution. Those are the real grades. That's the map you've got. It's a good map. I ask that you vote for it. Thank you for your patience allowing me to present it. And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Question now is on the adoption of the committee substitute. Is there objection to adoption of the committee substitute? Chair hears none and the committee substitute is adopted. Is there objection agreeing the report of the committee which is favorable to the passage of the bill? Chair hears none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none and the main question's ordered. Questions on the passage of the bill by substitute, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay. What purpose does the senator from the 36th rise? On the passage of the bill, the yays are 32, the nays are 21. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed by substitute. Want to take a moment to thank the group that has worked with us the most throughout this entire process for all of us. Gina Wright and her entire team, thank you so much for all your help and dedication to taking all of our meetings. For what purpose does, what purpose does the senator from the 36th rise?
Request to make a motion.
State your motion.
I'd like to move for unanimous consent to consider and to have read and adopted a privileged resolution that arrived late to the chamber.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read the caption?
Senate Resolution 58 EX by Senator James of the 35th and others, a resolution honoring the life and memory of Michael Langford and for other purposes.
Senator from the 36th has asked for consideration to adopt the resolution. Is there objection? The chair hears none and the resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes the majority leader. Chair recognizes the majority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourn until 10:00 a.m. on Monday, 22, November 2021 pursuant to Senate Resolution 48 EX.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
Rules Committee meeting has been canceled. There are no other meetings scheduled today.
What's the Rules Chairman going to do with himself? Does any other senator wish to make an announcement? The chair sees none. The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourn until Monday, November 20... Easy now. For what purpose does the majority leader rise? To make an announcement? Chair recognizes the majority leader to make an announcement.
We have no, there we got it. Hey, I just wanted to say real quick, thank you to the doorkeepers and security for, that came and hung with us during this entire special session. We couldn't do it without them. Thank you, guys.
Does the senator from the 35th wish to make an announcement from your desk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, since for some reason my resolution for my mother's 91st birthday, which will be next week, did not come in and go through the process, I'd like to wish Mrs. Maricene Thomas, who is a native Atlantan, and she's, she's still a beautiful woman and within her right mind, and she's very healthy. I want to wish her a happy 91st birthday.
Happy early birthday. The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourn until Monday, November 22, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? The ayes have it. Senate stands adjourned. Have a great weekend.